You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Plating Board Thursday, August 24th, 2023 hearing. You're in the select board hearing room. We all know by now the drill about was really what not. We have a post your agenda for second on favor. It's six thirty. We have a public hearing, a special permit accessory dwelling, nine Ocean Avenue. And why don't you, why don't you do your case?
In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty eight, section nine and eleven, and with City of Plating by law, section five thirty accessory dwelling special permit and section nine forty referrals, the planning board will conduct a public hearing at six thirty P M. On Thursday, August twenty four, twenty twenty three, in the North Ford's hearing room at Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Christian Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owner, Jennifer Foley, for an accessory dwelling special permit for an accessory dwelling to be located in an existing garage to an existing single family dwelling and property located in nine Ocean Avenue Situate. Property as shown on the access map parcel eight dash three dash thirteen. Plans are available in the plan to an office, et cetera, et cetera.
And then you go. If you would give us your name and F charts, Jennifer Foley, nine motion app. So I, I do know, um, if you tell us what's happening, but we do know that you're here. Really looking for forgiveness instead of permission. This is already over running, right?
Yes.
All right. All right. So why don't you tell us the, the events that happened?
Sure. The, the events.
So I know that she was applying for a permit for a garage.
Oh, yes.
If you could tell me.
Oh, sure. Okay. Pre renovation, twenty seventeen, uh, four bedroom house. It's huge. Or I, um, in twenty eighteen, I renovated the existing structure and merged to, um, the bedrooms upstairs. Um, and then in twenty twenty one, I'm sorry. I did a renovation with you, must've been twenty twenty. The renovation, um, and built, uh, took down the existing non conforming garage and, um, built an detached garage that fully conforming, um, and put the, uh, moved the fourth bedroom out there. So that's why it says like four. And since then, um, I added, um, a kitchenette to the space. So, um, small appliances, like the smallest homeowner would sell me. Um, and have used it, um, for friends and family who have stayed helping with my baby as well as, uh, some people, like most of the grandmothers and women in the neighborhood send their excess family over. They run out of beds. Um, but I've recently had two, um, people stay who like needed a place to stay for like a minute.
Do you tell us about a kitchenette? Can you tell me what your appliances in that kitchen are?
Sure. Um, uh, uh, refrigerator on top, freezer on the, on the bottom, like twenty odd inches or maybe twenty four. Um, small sink, um, microwave. Uh, I have a toaster, a curry. And like a twenty inch stove.
There was a stove.
Hmm.
So that's what meant to the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, that's what, um, Mr. Joe will, yeah.
So that's what makes your accessory dwell.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. So.
So we need the, the bio on that which I do. So, um, this put a lot of chalk and tongue about the second goes. We'll get a very permissive accessory dwelling. And I'm going to be a letter that will take it to me in response, just so it could be read into the bracket. Like it, and then I'm going to address the differences. Okay. Just so it's six to the amendments of the playbook. We are likely to express our opposition to this application. The property owner added a garage approximately a year ago. Without a permit for accessory dwelling, the owner had a kitchen, a bathroom, and bedrooms. Urban law disentho we will be prepared to be rented from time to time. To great this permit, make a mockery of the zoning laws used currently in the books. We have watched with absolute dismay as the planning board removes the purpose for accessory dwellings in mine. We are sympathetic in atmospheric field. However, one of your fields is becoming illegal rental properties, especially when the property is sold. Real estate listings have highlighted that a property has a right to renew. Nine motion app is not the first example of a client request post construction. At sixteen Vienna Road, the original permit for the addition of a free series garage had long ago disappeared. In twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, no digital record existed. The garage was built with separate parking, kitchen, living room, two bedrooms, a loft, laundry, and back deck. Upon completion, the property was listed for sale and the listing advertised to be rented. The new owner applied for permit for an accessory dwelling claiming ignorance of the disappearance of the original permit as was made manifest. We attended the hearing in zone. Opposition views were quickly shut down with a click. The permit was granted. The property sold again within a year. He called bill first and asked for permission post quote noise. Makes a complete mockery of planning and zoning and other officials responsible to monitor the implementation of zoning rules as well as the gasping at the home owners who actually follow the rules. And we would directly impact the technical given appropriate subdivide property for the property. It goes on a little bit. We don't like to address that issue, which is, um, we absolutely permit accessory dwelling units. That's not a mockery of what it is that we do. We do that. We, we advocate them. Uh, we want all of them obviously to be legally supposed to be legal. And I've lived in this town for a long time and I know there's lots of that matter. But the bill for us permission does happen a lot and we are trying desperately to catch up with this. But be under no, um, serious implication that we do not allow this because we do. Um, and in the title of Situate, they do not have to belong to family members. They can be rented to anybody for anything that you want. What happens often times how we testify these things is when we sell your house. And you're not perfect. And that, that becomes a problem. I think one of the issues that I see, and I can tell you I'm on Ocean Avenue every day. So I know that and, um, and I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. And I'm speaking as a person that is the chairman of Plating Board that I do have issues with everybody who's in rental properties. And I think that is by law we need to address that somehow. Um, because I know people all over town are, are separate artists, they're really without any kind of anybody looking out for us to make sure that it's okay. And you are a residential area. It's not a hotel area. It's a hotel. So that is the top of minus for over a year. However, in the M T A, it's shorter. So we are trying to get anything done on that. But be assured that we, um, we have never asked anybody to take our accessory dwelling. We need to be sure that what you have is legal and is permit as everything is supposed to have, including staircases, entrances. Um, the light's in the right place. We're not wanting anybody else's property. We, we have a big thing about white furniture. Okay. So Karen, you already can, you want to add to this, well.
Um, no, it's, it's an accessory dwelling. It meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. Accessory dwellers can be rented in Situate. Um, I came up with some different numbers that maybe applicant did. But I came up, um, with thirty six point seven percent, um, which is still less than forty percent. Both said, so it's an approvable accessory dwelling. And I recommend that we go through the extended by the permissions to our accessory dwellers. So this is a puzzle. It's four hundred eighty two to this.
I have a question.
Yes.
This was built two years ago.
It, it was during the
It was very close.
And I remembered the book.
So.
I know it's been, well, it's some big.
So you built this, you pulled the building permit, and the building department inspected this final?
Yes.
With the kitchen and the bathroom.
Uh, they were recently went through in May or June. So everybody has been through in the last, uh, summer. Um, fire, plumbing, electrical, um, and Mr., uh, Bob and Danielle were all in. And encouraged me to, uh, acquire the apartment instead of all this stuff.
But what you filed for had none of this yet.
Uh, well, the only, if the, I didn't know, but the kitchenette has been crossed out. Um, I had a friend of mine who built cabinets, built them and, um, put them in. I, I really respect those. I'm, I'm on a town board, so I appreciate them. Um, so I would not have gone afoul of something if I, if I knew it. Uh, worked very quickly with the building inspector at the, his office.
And did you have any feedback on those?
Well, what brought the building spec, the building department issued a violation and said that it was a vi, it was a violation because this wasn't accessory dwelling. It doesn't have stove in it. You can have an independent living unit with a kitchenette with no stove and it's not an accessory. The building department does not consider that an accessory dwelling.
I get that, but this has stove.
I, it may not have had stove when it was received occupancy.
But I thought we just heard that they just went through this.
I don't, they went through there, like.
A second job.
You, I don't, I don't want to, I don't remember everything. But I know that they went through it recently and everybody flipped it up. And they took the, uh, permit that had been the window.
Violation letter was just this, this spring. And the applicant filed pretty much as soon as she received the violation letter.
Okay. So, and the violation was?
That was next every one.
Did you have to disconnect? So.
Uh, I offered to turn off the, the breaker and they said just to leave everything.
So Karen, is it true when you allow the permit, any kind of capability of argument, the applicant don't have plans, right?
Well, the inspectors, I mean, the inspectors don't bring plans with them when they, they don't have the plans with them when they go out to inspect. They go out, the electrical inspector, Duski's inspector, the bonding inspector, Duski's inspection. Uh, but that they do all the inspections. So I, I don't, I don't know where things, what, you're trying to find out where things went wrong. And I don't, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
We, we permitted illegal accessory dwellings in the past, but most of those accessory dwellings have existed for quite a long time, right? This one's a little
No, no. No, I was only
Okay. When you went to get your building permit for the garage, did you bring a plan with you that showed, um, a locked bedroom and you were putting in a bathroom? Was that part of what you showed the building department?
I didn't apply for the permit myself. My builder did. So I don't know exactly, but I would presume, yes, because otherwise.
Right. Wouldn't be there. It's my point is this. We've had the same scenario at Three Garden Road. And what was to be in it? It is a garage, a detached garage. Yours is attached. And it had everything in it. No, no bedroom, but it was an exercise room. And I really think, and this is in one sense, nothing to do with you one year. But rather somehow we have to figure out a way to have the building department say, you have the potential here for accessory apartment. You really need to pursue planning rather than after the fact. Because that's what happened was three garden road.
If I'm not mistaken, the plans that were submitted here were the same plans that were given for the building partner. So it shows, it shows a living area on the second floor and it shows a living area on the first floor.
But I am saying is.
So this plan was submitted?
Yes, and
I believe so.
With the building department, with the kitchenette and the bathroom?
Yes, and I, I, that's my point.
Well, that, that was the question I asked.
Right. The building department is, were missed. I said that, sure. The building department is were missed in what they're doing. And we have a big
Disconnect.
Disconnect and
So this is not a word. So every, every project.
Right. And we have a big disconnect between what is considered to be a stove and what isn't. And we've had that discussion with the building department. Again, Karen, there's nothing to do with you. And you can get a convection oven in there to put on the counter and you've got a stove. Or a hot, whatever. So that said, we have to figure out, it's really not about you. It's about the building department.
But I mean, the applicant, as soon as she got the violation, she, and then she responded to the violations.
To her.
And so, you know, that's what we have to go along.
I understand, but I think it needs to be said that this is another instance of the building department not doing what they're supposed to do and alerting the applicant, whether it's the contractor or whomever. There is potential here for an issue.
So I guess I want to ask you that this, this is a public hearing. Um, we have a particular interest in laying these staircases. So you can, I know that you have two entrances, one inside the garage and one inside the in very bright whites. I do most of that.
Bright lights?
Yeah, and, and night.
Okay.
So I, I think that this is a public hearing, so I am going to open it up to everybody here if they have anything that I want to say. And also to, to the public, if everybody wants to say, can you repeat, you just please get your name.
And do you mind if I ask a, a quote, which, because I can dim all of those lights. So if you tell me which ones are too bright, I can dim.
I, I can tell you that what went on here, I, I noticed the light, um, between you and this is seven or four, plus two of that.
Uh huh.
So I, I know that's, that, that's where I see them. I walk.
Yeah.
Um, is that, and that's motion detection.
Um, well, the motion detection one is the, uh, camera that's on the driveway. All of the others go on at dusk, okay? But, um, I can dim them because they're smart bulbs. So, um, I'm happy to make that, I mean, the neighbor did put in a, a healthy row of abreviated. So I don't know if she's affected by that, but I'm happy to get to make that happen.
Do we have any comment in public?
On lighting?
On anything?
Uh, I have a list.
You need to put your name now.
Sorry, it was saying Fargo, five Ocean Avenue. Um, I was concerned about this dwelling right from the get-go. And to be, to clarify, it was not an existing building. The existing garage was torn down and this was a newly built.
Yeah.
But we consider that existing.
Okay. Um, I've had concerns right from the get-go about the setback on the southwest corner, which is where three property lines come together. That arc from that point is supposed to be twenty feet. I do not believe it is. I had gone and asked Bob Volul um, or before construction started. And, um, there had been posting or stakes or whatever. He called me and said, everything's all set and went back down to town hall and the number had been a race can change, but nobody came to his site. So I questioned that setback that is supposed to be twenty feet. I believe it is not. Um, just the size of it, and then she was permitted for a garage, not an accessory dwelling. Um, I went to town hall on Monday to ask for an as-built. And there is not an as-built on file.
Well, they would have had to have an as-built of the foundation, otherwise he wouldn't give him an occupancy permit.
There isn't an occupancy permit. I spoke with the girl in the office and she, I asked her for an as-built plan. She went to the file. She asked if it was my home and I said, no. She pulled it, took it out, looked at the permits. There were two permits in the folder. She looked at the permits and she said, oh, they're not signed off in all places. She also told me that, um, there was no as-built and also no occupancy permit. And Neil Duggan also told me that there was no okay. And when she was on violation, the dwelling was still being rented by the tenant. Um, basically the proximity I know is eight feet, but I am dealing with these people whom I don't know on a regular basis. I mean, in and out, in and out, ten feet from my back. I don't know who these people are. I don't understand how a garage has to be forty feet long and how this even got permitted in the first place. And I guarantee that that wherever the as-built is, is completely different construction.
Okay. Do you want me to introduce you like office here?
Well, I can identify a little bit of the structure, so. Say, like, do the drawings match the that was on the ground?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't.
We think of them in quote.
Is there a basement on that plan that was submitted? Yes.
Under, under the garage?
Hmm, under the, um, under the first living space. I can find the page.
The whole is bigger?
No.
Well, accepted. And is there anything the board have about this?
Uh, we think, yeah, we got a comment from the sewer division that said it's not on sewer. Um, we have a comment from the water department that says, um, the water for the accessory dwelling is topical by the heater. And we've not got a comment paper.
I was saying it didn't go. It state more that, plus what that.
Right, so.
I would think that when you have a new build, that you would have your septic system.
The, the septic was, um, prepared at the same time. So, um, yes.
Right.
So it takes into account the new bathroom and the water lines that are, that are running, so.
Yeah, yes. Everything works. Uh, I believe it's done.
Yes.
Yeah, my bedroom is right there. That's my bathroom. So four bedrooms, four bedrooms. So one bedroom would have been discontinued in the total issue, in the, in the main dwelling. So I didn't get a comment.
Now, this seems more like a, like an issue that we'll need to either figure out or peg down with the bylaws.
Absolutely.
As opposed to, and issue what's going on at this resident's.
That's my fault.
Doesn't, you know, like looking through the bylaw, there seems to fit it, even though it's we're backdating or not backdating, but going back and proving ex post facto.
Yeah.
Which is not the first strike, but so like I said, this is our word of courage. We probably have to do something with the bylaws.
Because at the end of the day, it's a tax writing issue for the town, getting the square footage on the accessories.
I guess one question would be. I don't that it's got to be a conforming garage, right?
Right. It has to be a conforming garage. So I mean, I can, maybe the best thing to do is continue and I will go back and re-investigate. Um, if it meets all setbacks. Um, you know, if the building department has an as-built and occupancy permit, it was granted.
I agree. So if those two things are fine, then
pre-thinks, you know, pre-thinks. Set that.
Yeah, you have to set it. And then it, the garage has to be, um, the builder said that. Yeah, right. It's not a detached garage. It's an attached garage. So it has to be, uh, very high.
But they shouldn't be mad at us.
She does, she, she said that's what the decent would have to have to. Yes.
That's what space that you.
You're in violation of state, state.
No, 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 but I mean, that house. Yeah, this is another.
It's an attached, it's an attached garage. It's all attached. I can, I, all I can do is look into the back.
And I hope you should. I mean, it's, if you can meet that criteria, the as-built, the, um, setbacks and the third item was occupancy, but also to ensure that the lighting is down lighting. In other words, it should not.
We could do this.
That's kind of the condition.
This is more whether the building itself is for, what are the needed accessory dwellers.
All right then, Karen, what do we have?
Sorry, anybody on, online that wants?
Wait, you might have more comments. I don't know.
Everybody.
Nothing. It's comments in your room.
Hi, can you give it?
I'm a twenty collar out of your care flyer. Um, you know, this is, this is the second time inside of two years I've seen the same situation where a permit was requested by owner at sixteen, yeah, it was even, it was even more egregious because the owner built a garage, two bedrooms, one in the other house. And then sold. The sale said that the property had a rental property on it. They had money. We sold the property, then the new owner came claiming ignorance. Oh, I didn't know. I didn't know. And was granted the, you know, the accessory dwelling part. After the fact, well, after the fact, this had a separate driveway and separate everything. I can't testify today as to whether it's being rented or not, but that house is big. The garage is bigger than some houses again. And, and that's what, you know, some, you know, Miami neighbor here are concerned about. We're, we're seeing this happen all the time in life. I mean, obviously property is incredibly valuable. I think it's wonderful when people have space for their family. I'm not, I'm totally okay with that. But it's becoming, these accessory dwellings creep into rental properties, especially when the property gets flipped or, you know, it becomes something and that's not okay. There's nothing about that that's okay.
But I will by law allow that. I will by law, I'll by law allow you to rent your accessory dwelling. There are some houses that does not have the Situate's not going for this. So did we allow anybody who has an accessory dwelling to rent it? But that is legally in our line.
A legal accessory.
A legal accessory dwelling, you can rent it.
Yeah, no, I understand it's a legal accessory dwelling. My question was, is why did the pay port disappear on that? You know, at the time of the hearing, where is the pay port?
I just, I'm just not happy that that.
You know, and, and is the pay port all here? We're in digital age. I mean, this wasn't twenty five years ago. And, you know, it's like, why, but why is it after the fact? I mean, it was accessory dwelling. It is legal. Then why wasn't it filed early in the beginning?
Well, that's what we're trying to get at.
Right.
So that's part of our issue is that, uh, and there's no way for us to, to, to punish a builder, but what your builder is for your contract. So it's up to us, it's the planning board to rewrite our accessory dwelling by law. You know, I think we'll be turning this over in there. One of them has to be the structure rentals. Absolutely. It, it does. Not just in Miami, it is all over town. Rest assured, we hear this all over town. So, um, it's the age that we live in. And as I said, it's, um, this is our learning curve for this project is we are going to have to go back probably a little more aggressively than we wanted to. And early time in order to, to write this. What I'm going to tell you and I'm going to tell everybody listening, all zoning is passed to town meeting. You must come to town meeting in order to approve or disapprove a zoning by law. People, we do not do this out of our own free will. It has to go to town meeting. So Miss Foley, I guess everybody has to have a continuing one.
I have one.
Oh, sure.
Um, the, I appreciate what everybody has done and I just want to correct a few things that were incorrect. The unit has not been continuously occupied by any standard of means. Um, I think this year since, um, January one, it has had somebody in it seventeen days total. Um, now there's. Um, now there's somebody like a family friend who's coming uh tomorrow for four days. And that those days do add up, last year a total of thirty five days. So it's not something that I'm using to like overrun the neighborhood or make money, it's purely. A nice to have that I hope to put like an all care there at some point or or something like that. But in the short term, it's what I'm using it for.
So unfortunately, you 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 caught the bad end of the stick, you should have understood here.
Oh, yeah, I totally understand.
And we 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 do what we're supposed to do, and you are actually applying with what you're asking.
Yep.
And you're not the first person to pay the cost to to ask for forgiveness as as if a payment of permission. Um, and as I said, um, every contractor in town should be aware of this, and this is kind of what it most eventually what happens. And so to address your point, is the wire is that um it it's hard for us to keep up with this because there are so many of them all over town. But we are trying, there's always so much we can do, there's always so much enforcement that that we have. Um, the only thing that we can tell you is that if this does happen and it comes to your attention, you need to write, not complain, you want what your building department. You write a letter of complaint, and that's what happened, and that's how this came before us, had that not happened. And I'm not, I'm not sure you're not the only one on the way now, I mean, let me say, I just, as I said, I know that there is, we know that there is. So um we will continue this. Yes.
Could you please clarify that an accessory dwelling can be rent illegal?
Yes.
Can be rented, but not as an Airbnb?
That's not, that's not a true statement.
Not a criteria.
That's not a true statement. It can be rented as long as the owner occupies, the owner has to occupy the primary or accessory dwell. We don't have any requirements for Airbnbs in this town, we don't have any restrictions on how long an accessory dwelling can be rented. So it could be rented as an Airbnb at this point in time.
But not without an occupancy.
Well, it shouldn't be rented without an occupancy permit, but I don't. That that's, the planning board has nothing to do with that, that's a total building department issue.
Yes, so I mean, it's like us, it's the issue here, I I think is not if people are opposed to accessory dwellings. People are are opposed to Airbnb short term rentals, which I don't know if this applies or not in this case, but it it. So people say, you know, I mean, that has kind of what happens. We will address this for zoning, is there anybody online that would like to comment on this?
Uh, I just got through from the internet.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Lambert, you have no one that has their hand raised currently?
Thank you, Sam.
Just one thing about the Airbnb, so we're confined to acting within the current town bylaws, the zoning bylaws, so. Changing those like to change whether or not you can do Airbnbs or short term rentals would be something that would have to be. Brought up before town meeting, um, we also like go through and discuss possible changes to the bylaws too, so. If you're interested in making that kind of change, that'd be something that we could work with you on or, you know, however. Like you wanna do that, but that's something that actually has to be addressed and voted on at town meeting. So in the bylaws currently, it doesn't have any stipulations about Airbnb or short term rentals.
Mr. Jordan, Austin, Steve York. Steve York, uh, these are special permits that you're granted. So I think you may actually have the ability to put a condition that it has a rental term on. As part of the special permit, I don't know if you have to go to town meeting for that, but in Jen's defense. If this meets the regulations that are in the bylaw from a zoning perspective, she should be entitled to the building, whether it was done before or after. As long as she meets the conditions that are written in the zoning bylaw. Uh, again, why it was done ahead of time or behind time, it doesn't really make a difference as far as this board is concerned. I think they really wanna just look at, can she meet these regulations? So if there's something wrong with the setback, there's a problem. If she meets the setbacks and she meets all these other things, she's probably gonna be okay, and the the board is gonna determine that. You can put special conditions on a special permit, so I I I actually own property in Plymouth. And I have an Airbnb next to me, they're rented for eleven hundred dollars a night. There's three families that go in there usually at a time, and it's usually fifteen to seventeen people. I bought at the end of this beach because I wanted to be out there in the middle of nowhere, at sixty feet from me. I have a party every single week for all summer long, and it's, so I understand the Airbnb stuff. It's sometimes it's good if it's in the right area, I'm not necessarily the favorite Airbnb's, but she certainly can rent this thing out. At a thirty day interval or something like that. You know, if it's a family member, that's a different story, if they want to come in and stay. You'd probably do the same thing, you know, if you're gonna let a family member, you know, you had the room, but as far as Airbnb rentals, I think they can't.
All right, so I mean, I think it won't take too long to determine, you know, I'll check with the building department on. On the issues, I would, I think we think we'd be able to have it at the next meeting on September fourteenth. Um, why don't we continue it to eight thirty? Um. On eight thirty PM on um September fourteenth.
Is there any way I can be earlier?
Uh, we already have an advertised public hearing, two advertised public hearings.
That's good, okay, no, it's just, okay, number of babies.
Would you like to move the motion? Move to continue the public hearing on nine Ocean Avenue to September fourteenth, twenty twenty three at eight thirty PM. With time to file. Maybe.
October first.
October first, one twenty three.
Okay.
All favor.
And what's the time to file?
That is.
That's.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Okay. So now when I was discussing, I needed to use the planning board alternate.
Yes.
So exciting, so it's. More good questions.
I mean, how?
How's you?
I'm good for you.
This is a special video of you.
Right, right, I saw some.
Well, I'm looking at the other side, I guess, I asked the same set of questions.
Everybody else.
Somebody else. So I could briefly, so I like, why would I guess?
Um, I applied to be on the planning board, I I'm a long time, well, I grew up in Situate. I grew in Situate, I I moved away, I have been in South Carolina, Atlanta. Moved back um to Massachusetts and bought a house on Maryville. Um, and then we renovated it two years ago and moved here permanently. And I feel like as sort of a long term resident of Situate, I can see, and also. Having lived in South Carolina, you know, Atlanta, going watching definitely very different. Um, I can kind of see the changes in the town, obviously, when I grew up here. And I think it's important to have a vision of where Situate is falling, so things change, change better. But you need to have an idea, I think, of what that change should look like. I hear a lot of chat, for sure, on, you know, some of the things that have changed in Situate over the past like fifteen years. I feel like things are sort of accelerating, building, whether it's apartments or um. You know, larger housing complex and stuff, divisions. I think it's important to have someone that um has really close ties to the community, like I do, and sort of history. With it as well as a perspective of what what other um communities look like. What are, you know, possibly for.
I'm curious how you contrast the zoning et cetera here versus the Atlanta or wherever you work.
I was in Greenville, there, um, I think they were, they were, Greenville in particular was going very, this was four twenty years ago. And, you know, you could live in a house and I don't think their commercial zoning was as sort of clarified as it is here. So you're living in a house and property next door is purchased next, you know, it's a struggle. So that kind of. And they definitely didn't have a lot of restrictions from what I could see in terms of um franchises. You know, Donald, Wyndham, you have this kind of cute little town, I don't know if people have one. There's a Wendy's corner, which again, I'm I'm not saying that happening with franchises is a bad thing, but I think it's something to be mindful of. When you're kind of developing community.
Well, I mean, most workplaces are places kind of like Houston, they just explode.
Yeah.
They just, they had, there was no master windows.
Yeah, there's no master windows.
Right, that's very much why, yeah. So so um so your experience, your background, do you have any relation to what it were except for casual places in the houses? So what do you see on the big issues facing us? If you sit on it, do it, whether.
Well, maybe accessory dwelling. Conversation is interesting, Marion Road. I'm sure you've all heard that, or there's quite a dear Airbnb.
The cat me.
What's that?
Cat me.
Yes. Yes, he was walking in lengths or something, I don't know if you've seen that. So again, I'm not, I don't have a problem with Airbnbs and with, I mean, just that example where I just watched accessory dwellings. But I do think it's important to um. You know, take into account the impact on the. So our neighborhood, Marion Road, is kind of a young neighborhood, um, there's a lot of kids, I mean, there are people without children as well. I haven't, we have not had problems with the Airbnb, so, but I know a lot of our neighbors have, I think delayed this problem for some people. Some of the events that my neighbor has held, sort of spent a couple matter of occasions. I think it would be. Interesting, I think it would be beneficial to sort of do a study on that, and like you mentioned, some towns have what restrictions.
And how you force that specifically.
I know, well, I know, and I I understand, I understand that the the board here does not make decisions on bylaws. The bylaws of bylaws, like you said, someone has an issue, they need to take a town meeting to change.
Within the bylaws.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, also, you don't have a lot.
Right.
Unless it's a small. So I I guess, for a general review, this is a real question, what overall contribution to the town? Would you like to help, what do you think is the most daunting thing to face us right now?
I know, I looked, I've looked several times at the bylaws, one hundred and twenty one cases, so. I can't say I know all of them, and also the board appeals thing, and I have watched some of the meetings. Spare time, home group, on um the YouTube channel, I think. I think, again, to go back to, change is going to happen, the town is growing and changing. And it's kind of having a vision of what that should look like. Do you want a lot of Airbnbs? Do we wanna have accessory dwellings, you know, that are granted out, not necessarily as an Airbnb, along the schedule? You know, what what does that look like? And setbacks is another thing that I'm super interested in. Um, I know there have been some houses that have been approved, and because they're more conforming than the previous one, but the setback. Bylaws, I I I think those are.
So I think what you're referring to in particular is a race to construct, which is not referred to, but this.
Right.
That's the zoning issue, and it could affect all of us. Um, so I mean, I mean, one of the issues that we wanna know is reducing what changes in zoning bylaws that. We change, we generally tend to put zoning by law before town meeting once in a while. Depending on what it is, sometimes it's very simple, sometimes it's very complex, if you hit the barrel water, that was very complex.
I wasn't, but I followed it from afar.
And you know, it can be something, even what we change is suppose on driveway, zoning is really difficult, people kind of see, we really have to worship. So I'm into it, and I I have to ask these people on the topic, so, um, I know, so. The zoning bylaws themselves, um, and they're not always, we're very, um, cut to wood, we don't always agree, which is what interests everybody. I have the same opinions and um everybody is free and entitled. I personally, as a chief of law, not being in his folks, I feel like they don't put it on top, it is it is a deceptive on that. Um, so if the new board is totally opposed to proposed development, and you have read the application, the bylaws, and we meet all the requirements. This is where it gets really tricky, how do you rationalize approving or denying the application as best for the community and protecting the public?
I think, I mean, like, I know it's a long question, but I I mean, what I just witnessed and what I have seen on some of the previous meetings. See, I mean, the the bylaws of bylaws, like you said, we're not, you're not here to change them. I, there is some way over them, though, I did, you know, when I looked into some of the previous cases, like impact on the community were. Yeah, I mean, that's what we, like, again, what we just heard here. Impact on the community might not be something that you can deny someone on, so.
So what did the baby say, I'm sorry, you have to kind of approach the bias.
Yeah.
Top, I dropped. That's, that's what we're, that's what we're elected to do. So how do you feel about the balance between the economic development and preserving the town's character?
That's.
I think if you have questions that you want to ask, you should ask those questions, this was a guideline of questions, but I don't think you need to.
Okay, so what, what, so this act of law, this would goes to the child character and to develop what happens to the child. So, you know, one of those issues is is the thirty year old child, it's what's fifty five years ago, or a very young one, I mean, that's what we deal with all the time here.
Interesting question, I guess it depends on how you define the character, the character. So is Situate still a quaint old town? Was fifty years ago, no. More should be, right, so things are changing, I mean, fifty years ago, no morph was harvest. Or lumberers.
It's a lumber guy.
Yeah, it was a lumber guy, so. So things, I mean, things are going to change, I guess, I I, everybody probably has a different idea of what may happen. Do I think Situate should evolve into a town employment? No, I don't think it would, I think it was a lot bigger, different geography too. Do I think Situate should evolve to a town like? Chatham? No, not either, I mean, it's a different socio economic base up there for both of those towns. And I think that those things you need to take into, that's one of the things that all of Situate. That it is a little bit is diverse in terms of socioeconomic.
So, and I I I guess, real general question, so I do have to answer, so you know, what what is your, what do you understand that that do with musical planning? So I guess the question is, have you seen a master apartment, have you worked with a professor?
I did, I.
Pretty difficult.
I went to the same one, I did, I. I think it's important to have a master for a town too.
And I guess, what faces us, what is, I says, projects can be forced, but don't get into a master, we have to try to find a way, I'm. I can do that, I can do that. So I I don't have any more questions, Rebecca, I don't have more questions.
Um, we got your resume, um, it's been interesting to hear a little bit about what's your, our background, whatever it is. Uh, just, just because I looked at all these things and I haven't looked at it in a couple of days, so.
Like, so are you?
Yeah, five minute version.
Five minute version, so more work, so as I said, I I grew up in Situate, I grew up on um Hurst Street, lost enough. Um. Got married, went to Mass, got married. Um, like I said, lived in Greenville, lived in Atlanta, moved back, we lived in Westworld for twenty years. Always had rooms here though, my parents were here and bought the house on Marion, who renovated, moved down here full time, I'm a teacher. I worked for the class of public schools and went back to work like seven years ago, I have four kids. When the youngest was getting close to moving on, I decided to get back at it, taught in Union for five years, Westworld for a year. And now I work in the.
Elementary school.
Um, I'm actually an EL teacher, so I work with students who are learning um English as a second language. So I actually work in groups one and twelve. Cool, and this will be my second year. When we moved to full time, it's a year.
Excellent, I appreciate that.
I think my teacher skills, we will stay with this.
I'm a teacher general.
This is a really much.
Miami, what do you want from us? What do you see from us?
I just love the experience, I've always wanted to be involved um in the town of Cituit. And when we moved here full time, I was just looking into communities and I just, I feel, like I said, I feel strongly about what happened, a direction in the master plan for where the town is going. Like you hear a lot of, right, when people talk about it, it's changing, the town's changing, it's going to change.
The only constant we have. Right, death and chaos.
Yeah. Yes, no, it's like the change, but the, and that, the, the sort of negative connotation, like, oh, it's changed, well, it's going to change. It's what, what do we wanna sort of look?
And everybody's opinion is different.
I know.
Everyone's different, and the sad part about it is I've been on and on this planning board for a few years. And when somebody buys into this town, so sweet, the moment they pass papers, they do not want a blade of brass to change. Once they got here, and they don't understand that when they did get here, it changed the town.
Right, by being.
It's a given. So, plus you can't get different here.
No, I, no.
You good?
The only thing that I would ask you is, do you have any experience in running, um, you know, longer twins? Or, um, I don't know, obviously writers, uh, what, what, the lesson writers, one of these is kind of a giant lesson writer, uh, like fifteen years.
Yeah.
Um, so giant, and if anybody makes attention, it would be nice, but um, you can experience um. Any, any kind of in depth type writing and research on what we teach from the.
Um, well, I took a few graduate classes, two year, three years ago, so I am very familiar with sort of academic writing. And I think we have to submit reports um at my, in my position.
Awesome. You know, so thank you for coming in.
A great base, he was not much. Okay.
And, you know, be aware that this is not the old water town.
Yes, yeah.
Need young people.
They are one of them, oh my god.
They'll be, they'll be, they'll be, um.
It's all relative.
It's all, um.
And, you know, and we. We need people who, who go to, so we, we, we develop, we, we give lots of stuff and stuff like, we need to stop, we have our communities, we try to keep track of all of it, there's a lot of. Sometimes, so, well, thank you for charging, is one of the, well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much, alright, thank you.
And also to once we make selection, so to everybody, they have to have a joint meeting with the board for the line up.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Robert, you're welcome.
Hi, how you doing, thanks for having me today.
So you've heard that kind of on your house, and it would be the same in the questions.
Sure.
Uh, what your courses, why, the first one I would ask is why you want to meet, right?
Sure, um, I was recently, uh, recently moved back to Cituit, I have some work out in progress. Um, you know, I wanted the opportunity to buy my actual next to my mom, so, still working on the privacy conversation, but, uh, no, it's, it's. It's, uh, you know, it's extreme, at the end of the day. No, coming back to Cituit, I was most recently, I sold some of my business interests and helped found a private business in Boston, specialized in buying and building industrial technology businesses. So effectively advanced manufacturers of highly engineered products, as materials, special chemicals, all the way through sensors and considerations, how we buy and take out our portfolio. So, you know, with that, I gave this time to really, um, you know, get involved in the community. You know, it's, I grew up in Cituit, I go asset, I was a TMS embarrassed, and, you know, I've been up and down the east coast. In a multitude of different, different locations and places, served on boards across the country and, you know, we take for granted what we have here, it's just truly. And, uh, you know, coming back here after looking at the place to live, it's, you know, every single day I'm like, oh man, it is, is the place in this world. And for me to get involved in some capacity, um, I might not know how to mow my lawn yet, but, uh, you know, doing strategic planning, five year development, financial planning are all things that I did on a very consistent basis. You know, contract negotiation, all those things is part of my businesses. Uh, so I thought, you know, this is just opportune moment, I bought my house back in May and that my tenant, the former owners kind of didn't move out until a few weeks ago. And I've been attending some meetings just to try to involve the community in some capacity. Um, and I was very interested, you know, at the end of the day, um, I think, you know, there's a new generation coming in, however you wanna look at it. You know, myself, contemporaries, friends, colleagues, associates or otherwise, and, you know, they don't have the time that I do currently to be able to get as involved. And, uh, it's, uh, you know, potentially being a voice for all of them, you know, can be, can be a element, um, and especially here, uh, you know, what's, what's going on on a regular basis. But doing my best to get involved, I thought this was, you know, a great opportunity for me, and this is a bit my skill set, uh, and what I've done to the best of my.
Just feel it way for test your problem to your problem.
Yep.
That, that we can tell you, um, want to review stuff like that, so I guess I'll, I'll skim to you, so you know what your background is.
Sure.
So what do you see issues that we're supposed to play for with the child right now?
One of the continuing gains is North Cituit, seems to be a, you know, there's a lot of different, um, issues going on there at the moment. And there's a lot of confines, constraints, from a timing perspective, decision-making perspective, financial perspective, all of which you're gonna come to fruition there shortly. And making those decisions, you know, are gonna have to come a lot, you know, pretty fast here. And, uh, I think, you know, from a development perspective. Like I said, taking it for granted here, trying to preserve the historical community, what we have, the open space, all these different parts of Cituit, it connects Cituit great. But with that, there's going to be, you know, development, change is inevitable, about how do we bottom, make those correct changes, especially in the confines, how do we do it? Never gonna appease everyone, right? So how do you do it, listen to the voices that are out there, what these groups, we have the experiences to make those decisions, perhaps for City going forward. And, uh, North Cituit seems to be lying behind a lot of different areas, but, you know, also has a lot of reservation and a lot of pieces of it that are very unique and we wanna continue on. But change does have to happen, it needs to be developed there, there needs to be banks, there's regulations, state level, federal level and otherwise, these things, decisions need to be made. And, uh, I think that's gonna be a, a lot of conversation about that coming forward, uh, of what needs to happen.
So, so a lot of that has to be resolved by law session now, and North Cituit has just been resolved. So we, we, we were talking about, I mean, you can apply bylaws between we push, you know, Cituit, we're job related for our basic commercial areas. Um, so. As we said before, change is always inevitable, and then, um, unresolved change is always inevitable. Um, as I often say, town meeting, it's the least sexy part of town meeting, but it's the most important part of town meeting. And people don't scare out and listen to it, that's a part of the problem, I mean, they're always the last talking agenda, and they, they go to sleep with the tour. So, you know, it's like I said, it's the least sexy part of town meeting. But again, so, um. Cituit talked about North Cituit, and yes, um, talk about developments. Years of life, first of all, if you know, people keep going, oh, I think three months may need to change. Um, but how do you rationalize developing and not developing on the Cituit border, how already, how, how do you rationalize, uh, what your decision would be if you wanted to. I don't know, whatever, in each building, you know, Cituit, some locations, you know, say just what we wanna do.
Sure.
You have to kind of rationalize on the, on the town.
Absolutely, I mean, within, you know, bylaws constraints and all these things that have, you know, as a, as a community, but. You know, balancing what we have is sufficient for twenty fourteen, all these different plans that have been developed for years, folks like yourself are very dedicated. Uh, you have, you wanna preserve historical significance, if some areas are, you wanna preserve the meaning that you have, and there's a lot of, you know, historicalities. But within those confines, I mean, there's eventually a gut instinct and there's things that just, does this make sense when you're walking down the street? I mean, you, as, as a group collectively, you've lived here, a lot of experiences, you kind of embody what Cituit is at this point, right? You know, if we have a tiny, you know, farmhouse that's built in eighteen fifty, and then you go over and you have an eighteen story building, well, that's probably not gonna fit the picture right now. Change needs to come, you know, it's a step function, right? It doesn't happen in this massive, you know, perfect curve all the time, but, um, it needs to be slow, it needs to happen within what we've already developed as a community. So, you know, it's, at some point, there is a, you know, something, a phrase I've heard recently was, it's too big a lot of times. How can you say something's too big? Well, if you're building eighteen stories on an acre of land and you have people all over each other, I mean, that doesn't make much sense, does it? And so, that's not perfectly written, but at least you're all, you know, using hash the efficient, all it tells you how to dispose of it and wisdom is for us to make those decisions.
Have you watched any other, um, meetings?
I've attended a few of them over the past, uh, two months, uh, to the best of my ability, both some of the, uh, economic development meetings, some of the, uh, building. To be honest, we keep it up with some committees, it's been a bit challenging, but, um, been traveling a bit, and I've come to a few of the, uh, important ones as well.
And so you know that we have a, um. Uh, we have a, a, a relationship with Zoe that sometimes we agree with it several sometimes we don't. So that's part of our issue with that balance that we play, which is what, what is it for Zoe by what, and what doesn't? And, and how that reflects into what's happening in the Cituit, possibly in particular, if you listen to our last couple of meetings, that's what's gonna happen. So, uh, how do you feel about the economic development and conserving the town's character? If there's gonna fall one into that, and since you're living in North Cituit, I'd want to talk about what's in particular.
Yeah, I mean. There's, there's a magnitude of change that's happened from what the local community used to be, you know, I'm still very young right now, I wasn't here fifty years ago. But from what the community was from a, you know, fishing local coastal community to what it's becoming now with MBTA coming down, train. And there are things you can do, you know, whether it's some local shops that come in there, it's been very good, very top opportunities, all those things. And when you have people that are gonna spread out, you know, from the city and come down because of the transportation, you're gonna be able to have those, you know, those stores, those shops and those things need to get to develop down there. I think, I think that, you know, I think that's a great opportunity for multiple folks, but you still need people to step up and develop those businesses, right? Yeah, you can't do it without people coming down and wanting to take that chance. So it kind of, you know, it, it runs the same, same line at the end of the day with, you know, having the, having people coming down in addition to having businesses that come aside, go alongside that. So you have to think about both of those simultaneously. So I think economic development, yeah, you're not gonna have a massive factory put in the middle of North Cituit many times. But can you have local stores and local shops develop that, you know, footprint, if people, more, you know, people start to move there and come there? Yes, and that's gonna be a balancing act, because I know the people in North Cituit are very passionate about, uh, that area, no change whatsoever. Change does have to happen, it's just a matter of can you control that and make it, we need these investors to, to change it up for.
So one of the issues that we're often asked is, what are you doing to bring business to Cituit, that's really not our job, that's, we have media to, to provide if you wanna come for a job. Um, so that's one of those things that you have to a lot of data about, which is, that's about development, we certainly wanna see businesses, we try to support a high success that come in. And then, um. And to, so you understand how you do miss the planning, um, that happens, it is absolutely a work in progress. Yes, but you're not such a guy, who's, Jesus was a child, I'm pretty close, so she knows a lot, so I, I often have to ask everybody. It, 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 everybody here has perspective that they bring a, a different talent, and one of them is, is how do you. How do you affect what municipal planning, you know, in a straightforward manner that everybody, and not everybody's going to agree with. And very often, um, what we are lacking, what it's, what the rules pretty said is in, in institutional history, and that's a huge issue. So how do you maintain that and develop a town, and also a title? And our whole day, like, as people say, is a great question.
What, oh, what, I, I can't say I had direct involvement in city planning and capacity, but what I did have a lot of involvement, we did a lot of. Our specialization was transitioning family under our businesses and it's all well. Um, there's a special moment when a business's life, where we're going through third generation of ownership and trying to transition that to family members, like you come to a fair count, right? It's a lot of institutional knowledge and things, uh, and we brought the, the reason we specialized in that was, we wanted to not only give the tools and systems for that business to transition to a place. But also to be able to grow, a lot of times it became stagnant, you know, there was a lot of things fighting. But we wanted to keep the business there, we didn't want to extricate the wire to come in and chop it up. And with the business, we thought that a lot of times would make successful, make effective businesses, with being the epicenter of that local community across all of this work and promoting jobs and functions. What we considered a success after five years was when we saw people wanting to work there. It was really cool and really unique, and I think, you know, what it comes down to it, a lot of that does come down to strategic planning. We were doing, you know, you're coming up with a plan that is five years, what you wanna be in five years, three years, two years. And there's gonna be change, right, along the way, it's not static, things to change. But, you know, within that, watching the jobs and promotion, watching within the confines of that community, where it is the biggest employer of that community. You do get, you know, inherently involved in what is going on out there. And you wanna make sure that you are, if you are being economic engine inside that community, you have to live with the consequences of what is going on over there. And so with that, you know, I'm very adept at being involved and understanding what the rules are, regulations, but that means if, you know, just to drive, kind of called to the city budget in any case.
That's, that's, and none of us actually, like, people change their whole lives.
In your capacity to sort of dealing with these individual companies, did you have to deal with any psych planning issues, local planning issues for those companies?
So, in, uh, you know, first, as an example, one of the businesses we bought was in South Boston. As you can imagine, the main factor in this in South Boston, the state ages, uh, you know, exactly the previous picture. So, you know, one of the things that we had to do, and it's most important and critical, is you wanna keep employee basic tax. So making sure you go through any way, you have a survey, um, of where the best spot will be. But moving that organization is not easy, the equipment, uh, product development, all of these different areas that businesses, compasses, compasses to be able to get there, continuing around all the time. It's what you do, you'll see planning, all the boards, regulations, you're getting involved, but most importantly, people involved in that, uh, to make sure that business did a lot of the work, but, uh, the most important aspect. So I think, you know, we move facilities quite a bit and, you know, expand facilities, all these things as a result. So towards most of these businesses, these issues come up pretty regularly, uh, especially the regular sort of problems.
And, and in, in those capacities, are there, are there areas that you saw from the, from the local community's point of view? That were frustrating from the, from the individual organizations, the boards or whatever they were, were there areas where you would say those were good practices that ought to be, uh, you know, expanded in other communities? I'm just thinking about how it might.
No, no, it's a great question.
Intersect with what we do.
A bit of both, to be honest, I mean, there's always frustration, right, with every business within a community or, it's gonna still with every, every week, every day, whatever, maybe you change, right? Change is frightening to people, and especially if it's been studied same way for a long time. And it's making sure that we're able, there's changes, and there's changes in decisions that may get at that very moment, and I feel like it was sort of the, in the prism of a long term, like, it doesn't make sense. And you watch it, it becomes a fruition after a few years, after those decisions were made, you watch those people come back. One of the examples are, you know, Vermont, uh, we watched people come back to work that, work that for forty years after their last meeting. You know, those, when you think, you see the decisions kind of full circle, and when you add it, we think like the corporate, awesome agency, I was able to work with a lot of them. Uh, they're the ones who did it at the end of the day, so being able to, to work with that, to see, uh, those types of changes that have, you know, in that strategic environment was, was pretty special.
Okay, um, do you have any questions for us?
Uh, not, not necessarily, there's, there's a bunch of different questions that are coming to my head more, more generally, um, but.
Maybe answer someone else.
But it's, uh, it's a long list of specificities, I think that are probably good for this forum, I read through everything, there's still lots of learning. But, you know, more, more importantly, I mean, what are you guys looking for in the next, as you guys have been involved for such a long period of time? I mean, what do you look for? I think someone coming forward. I think someone coming forward and participating in into the future here, because to embody a lot of working as a pro to.
It's time commitment. It is a time commitment and. Whoever is chosen needs to be here. And as an associate member, if somebody, you were an associate member for a couple of years. And you were, and actually I was at one point. We've all sort of transitioned into whatever. But the thing is. If somebody's absent, then the associate member gets to vote. But you still are allowed to discuss whatever's going on. You have an opinion and et cetera, et cetera. My government's agreeing. But everyone is entitled to their opinion. We can somehow come to consensus about what is the best way to go forward. But it's a time commitment. It is truly a time commitment. And you wanna be here. You know, show up. So.
Well, I think, I think to answer your question also is that uh just a different perspective is what we're looking for, right? We don't wanna have everybody who's just all alike thinking about that, because I think it takes a diverse set of opinions to really sort of zero in on what. Maybe is the, the best compromise solution, but not, not everybody's gonna be happy with any decision we make, so.
We spend so much time and a lot of the.
And to also see, I guess, like for like long-term planning wise, you know, stuff that we're looking at besides the needing to meeting approvals on. On uh, quote, let's say this for, you know, construction or whatever is. If we have, you know, less rain than usual and, you know, we have a little water level and one becomes a big issue and. You know, we're expanding more building, uh higher density in certain areas, we'd be able to handle those issues long-term. What else? Like the, you know, long-term, the uh. The downtown area, the harbor area, uh parking, you know, how, how should that look? Is it sustainable now or should we look into raising, you know, certain apartment laws, changing certain areas? So we'll just, yeah, long-term planning for the community overall.
Yes, I think that's a great point, Bob, and it's. It's at, at many times very difficult to do because sort of planning board is sort of a retail operation in a lot of ways. They're really talking wholesale, right? But we need to do both, right? And that's, that's kind of the, the classic challenge we face with.
And we're going toward it, I just, that's why, that's why, it's our goal. We're working, so uh, and and as we say, we um, yes, lots of opportunity if not this particular board of. Well, not frequent turnover, but and there's lots of, we, we need enough people, we definitely need. Uh people who are not engaged and 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 see a future here in situ. I think that's, that's our big thing here. We plan on making it to stay and help it through, as as you said, um. We do not all agree on almost anything, but it's like, we're all adults, we don't raise our voices, we all, yeah, we're all intense and do, well, sometimes, okay? But I do. But it's, it's um. We're always happy to hear another person's opinion. Um in meetings are always open, when you're here or mine. I mean, it's issue obviously to to you and see us. So I said, we won't make a decision tonight, but we certainly will let you know. And I'm very appreciative that you took your hands to the reins. It's a big step to change.
No, I appreciate the time. Thank you all. And it's uh really exciting to have you here at all.
Well, thank you very much.
Actually, thanks for.
Next. We're gonna, we're gonna meet now, let's do it. You thought, I thought.
Evo, yes.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
How are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
So you're very quick, so you kind of know what's happening.
Yes, yeah.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, so I um, I have been a Situate resident since fall of twenty fifteen. Uh I grew up in Alexandria, Virginia, just south of D.C. Uh did my undergrad in something in Newark, the Boston area, college. Uh and then I got my wife and worked in Boston. She broke her little asset. And then we uh, she really had to twist my arm to get me to move south to be near the ocean. Uh we rented into a asset for a few years and then I'm already able to find a place that we like here in Chicago. Uh and uh I'm an attorney by trade. I specialize in housing community development issues. Uh I have a clean position right now and maybe wanting to go towards something that's more directly in planning. Uh that's the piece of what I was doing that I tended to find more interesting. And I mean, moving out of practice, you know, completely, I'm not sure about that yet, but uh. I thought if, if I'm, if I'm interested in planning as a whole and my wife is actually the one who flagged that. An alternate position was open and out. Uh recently, I thought, well, why don't I just see what it's about?
And here you are, and here you are. So obviously, so you are aware, we have all got your resume. Uh and so I, I guess, so your overall contribution to the town will be, you know, help us.
Well, yes, that's, that's, um, I, I would have some of the skills, I think, necessary for the position by virtue of having seen some of the before practice. Understanding uh state, local, frankly, national issues on housing affordability. Specifically statewide, uh and the MBTA community's zoning changes have been significant. Uh and not to mention the, the town affordability uh requirements as a whole that still exist. Um but then with, with Situate two, um for me, I also think there's the fact that. That the fact that there is more rental housing in town, I think, is the source of. Change that been mentioned a lot. Uh that's one of the changes that comes up uh when people look at development trends in town. So I also think, you know, that that. My area expertise has to be balanced against concerns that the town has regarding town character. And uh specifically, uh and it sort of gets to the answer of, of what I think the big issue is in town here with planning. Uh we have finite land area. Uh we have a lot of land that is on the water. Uh that water level is only right. And so we have to be very careful about what we develop and where. Some of that's already addressed in zoning, but uh, you know, water usage in town is a huge concern. So I feel like my skill set could be brought to bear on dealing with some of these issues that affect Situate specifically. That are remitted to the town. It was part of what made me wanna try to do this.
So I'm familiar with that, I mean, and all that kind of stuff. There's a lot of stuff.
Yes, uh I reviewed it and it seems to me that the big conflict is the desire for development against the uh. Limited land area, shrinking land area, that's the risk of shrinking further.
I'm about to skip which one that. And one of the issues that we have in town, I think, is, is this town. For the residents or are we trying to attract people from away? We don't wanna talk about tourists, because we don't really like. But we need them. We do.
I like tourists.
I like tourists.
I mean, speakers, so.
No, I mean, a lot of people don't.
I've been to tours.
No, it's just. We want them, but we want their money, but, you know, is the harbor. Is going through, it needs to change in terms of resilience, et cetera. Do we, um. Do they need to, what the hell, what do they need to do? So in North Situate, we need sewer, what do we need to do there? Do, uh, but is it for the residents or is it for attracting people from away to utilize what we have? And one of the difficulties with Situate is you cannot get there from here. The train has been terrific, but it has not done, I think, what people have, had hoped that it would do. Because if you go to Green, if you go to the Green Bush rail station, there's no way to get to the harbor. There's no taxi, there's no, we do have Gatra. And the same thing in North Situate. There's no way to get to the beach. So it's, it's a double-edged sword. Those are the things that we're dealing with. And we're dealing with people that really like the place to stay exactly the way it is. I think one of the big issues that we really get with the support here. Yep, oh, that's huge. It's a huge issue. Um and since you, you've read the master plan, I, but I see from your resume that. Uh obviously, we, we know a lot about what we're dealing with, uh, on my weekly or second report, those are here every month. Um what we do. So one of the issues, of course, is to treat the, the economic development, how do you preserve the town's character? So as Ian said, they are not wanting the same, although people seem to think that they are wanting the same. So um very often, uh if you go to the harbor, how we, how we rest tourists can be helped, which is something. So how do, how do you track this? And that's not the current role of the planning board. But it does follow to us at some point, which is when we, when we approve multi-use facilities. Everybody wants, what's gonna be there? Well, we don't know. We're hoping to, to draw people. So that's my big issue. Do you have anything?
No.
Well.
I'm not gonna say anything.
Yeah. No, it's just, we're an interesting town. And one of the things that sort of sticks out in my mind is the fact that when I moved here too many years ago. We had about seventeen thousand people. It jumped to about thirty, thirty-five in the summer. We're at about eighteen-five after all those years. And it, right, it's changing. And what, it appalls me to see that a forty B, an affordable unit, one bedroom. Is nineteen hundred dollars plus utilities. I find that appalling. And I don't know how to deal with that. That's, that's a big issue.
Well, I.
Uh, sorry, appalling, too high?
It is too high, too high, too high.
Well, yes, and that's, I mean, and that's, that's the challenge, because that's Boston area. That's what the, that's what the, that's what the AMI rent that they can charge is. Now, it is, it's that depending on the income level, that, that gets paid by subsidy source. Either through, through HUD partially or through DHCD. But still, that's a lot out of the pocket for, yes, yes. I mean, that's, that's frankly, like, we bought in twenty fifteen.
That's a mortgage.
And my mortgage payment is barely above that. And we're very, I believe me, we are very fortunate. In, in where we are real estate-wise, owning a house here. Uh it's, it, it's the best decision I've ever.
Well, there you go.
For, for financial, for community reasons, yes, but that's, that's a, it's a huge issue. And you have people who are not doing what I'm doing for a living, who are trying to, to pay that rent to stay in a town when they may have grown up it. And that.
Yeah, and once.
It's a huge challenge.
Once upon a time, if you were a firefighter or if you were a policeman, you could afford to buy a lift in this town. Today, you cannot. Right, you can't.
Well, I think that's the nature of the beach, right? I mean. Once upon a time, there was nobody who lived in Situate either, so. Uh so, you know, we, we're just dealing with what's changed over time. I think the big changes in Situate have been the addition of the train, the biggest driving development. In the uh train station areas, we've had a lot of rental units built in the Green Bush, more proposed. And I think, you know, North Situate might be behind it if they had the infrastructure. And that's part of our issue is. You know, we don't have the infrastructure to support this kind of mass growth either.
And it's, I mean, sorry, to be frank, the infrastructure that this is being based around is not all that reliable either. I mean, I think that's, yeah, and that's not, that's not our issue. That's, yeah, that's, we're looking at businesses that may be depending on MBTA. And.
Well, I have had that on every day.
Right.
Uh I ride to Boston and I'm very happy to have it as.
Yes. Well, I, I just, it's, I, I have small children at home and it was uh. One ride in twenty fifteen, I just, I remember going up and discussing with my wife, it's worth it to drive to the ferry, because that at least. Gets back and I can control my drive time, yeah. I digress, but.
Yes, that's the best twenty three.
But I, you know, it is, it is really bad. I don't. I, I'm not upset about people coming into Situate at all, but people move. Uh about this, this country all over. I came to Situate, right, I did grow up here. Uh I think that town's terrific and one of the advantages, and that growth. In Situate, uh managing a kind of a long-term ability to sustain it is, is probably one of our biggest challenges. And uh, you know, it's like uncontrolled growth, it's gonna be pretty bad, right? Uh but there's a lot of pressures from the MBTA community debt and all of that to. To be good with that. And I just think there needs to be. Defensive, sort of focused to support the development of, it was recommended, it's important.
You have to, I hope it's good to us as well, so.
Right.
And we get one for everything. Do that, but you're lucky. I'm not, thank you for talking to me, and especially to everybody else, for definitely making a decision today and I will. But I really appreciate you doing, and we need all kinds of people, despite the solution of it's not the old board. Um every, but it seems like everything touches us at some point.
Oh, it does, indeed.
You know, I mean, everything at some point gets back in the logical way, and you have, it's all, it all comes back to us at some point, um. Um and we will hear from us, I don't know when, they may do a decision, but I want to thank you very much for coming in, for asking, nice to meet you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Appreciate that.
Don't go away. In other words, if this doesn't work out or whatever, something else, and you will be fabulous in the zone over here.
I've been told that. I, I don't wanna be hated.
Let me just tell you, I have been tossed off this board before. And I keep coming back, and I keep coming back. So don't, you can catch a pretty thick skin, but don't let that deter you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Good night.
Yes, that's mine, but that's. I'll have to share. We'll share, whatever. Okay. So we have old business, new business, Doris Williams, and Karen has expected, which we'll wait for, to come back. I'm perfectly excited to be with you. I think I'll lose the uh. Okay, can we take a finally break now, Jess?
So moved.
Okay. You can get your phone, we, I get your.
Okay, we're off.
Can you shut that off, please? Can you mute us?
Uh, yes, see, do you want to be muted there, yes?
Yes, please.
Just let, just let us know when you wanna start again. You're muted. All right, you're all set, you're ready to rock and roll again. All right.
Thank you very much. Uh, we need to hold back, what do you understand them?
The, um, I'll main door.
I'll main door, exactly. On favor.
Aye.
Okay, no, I just see you guys want to do that. I have to repeat this for it, for the old business, so Karen has to do this for us, update the MBTA communities.
All right, so I'm sure I sent out, they made some revisions to section three A. So our efforts behind the scenes were, were helpful. When they realized that it's not just a couple of communities, it's a lot of communities that were facing this problem. Uh, so that, that part is good news. We're having a meeting with our consultant on Tuesday. I don't know how it's going to change our strategy. Uh, we know, I reported to you last time, that we get the unit capacity with twelve hundred and fifty units, based on what we, you know, said in the districts. But this may have be, you know, we'll have to see if she thinks that we can count the MBTD district. And how much capacity they'll give us. And if we should then think about revising some of the other densities for the other, for the outer districts. I mean, maybe, maybe we can, uh, that's gonna be a cheeky conversation on Tuesday and everything. Um, so hopefully, you know, we'll have an answer on that. Um, it's, this seems to say that if we're using a mixed-use development district, that we might have to have the state approve it before town meeting votes. And we're already on a tight timeframe. So I, that's what we're gonna have to really question her on, on Tuesday.
You would never call, especially if Helen something like this, get the child to support that. Why would we, especially, how they're saying, you know, that we're running much, we have to hit the town.
Well, we have, we have to be in compliance by December thirty first, nineteen twenty-four.
It's about a year plus.
But.
Yeah, you can be.
So. Right, so we have to say annual town meeting.
And specials.
And a special, so we have a lot of work between to do now and the annual town meeting. Because we have to have our public hearing December. Our consultant knows this, and her contract is only a short-term contract, and her contract ends, I think, the end of October. I mean, so she was gonna have all the zoning done by then. So we might have to take a small step backwards, but we may not have to make as many changes in the zoning as we thought.
They won't.
Run it to ground.
I think we have to run it to ground, see, see how much if putting in, if she thinks it's okay, and maybe as it is. Right now, we're in a density of sixteen units for Adrian by right. Um, and how much that will get us. Uh, maybe we can redo, if that gets, picks us up something, maybe we can almost keep N R N at just a little bit above what it, what it was. And we can spread out our densities over the other units, other districts, so that we can be closer to the numbers that are in the existing zoning bylaw right now. Which is all what you, what the town approved after it was put forward. Because we thought that that was the best percentage you would back then, so, I mean, to me, trying to stay as close to the existing bylaw is probably the right thing to do. I mean, because we decided when we when we implemented the V C N district, that we didn't want to add any more land area to the V C N district. V C N basically took over from Village Business Overlay District. Now, I'm assuming that the board still doesn't want to add any more land area. That's the assumption we've been going on, that's what we said before, but I'm just confirming that as we've had a request to add some land area.
And.
It's a parcel on Stafford Road, it's not continuous to our land district.
It's just, yeah, a contract zone.
Yeah.
No, no, it's just, well, personally.
Personally, I just don't think that he was right to say.
A lot.
All right, so I mean, I'm still, I'm still assuming that, you know, everything stands, oh, and, um, Karen, how far are we off? Well, right now, with this scenario that we projected last time with N R N going back to what did I say, sixteen, where situat was eighteen, G D C and G W B at seventeen. We got twelve hundred and fifty units, and we're required to have twelve hundred and thirty now. So.
But, but that's including the ones they may not count.
That's not including the ones they.
Right, also, that's why you're trying to do that, to say you should lower the density on a particular area. It's still apply, right?
Right, right, so, I mean, the idea was, what they tried to save fifteen units per acre. So if we might have to, we don't have to go to seventeen, we can maybe get it at fifty.
Well, you count the other.
Well, we count the others, just, then that would be more closely sticking with what we originally
Zone here.
Zoned everything for.
Not to have a bad one, well, probably for, which is, well, we got us. Then it'd be perfect if you could match.
So my question becomes, um, we're supposed to go to select board on September twelve to give an update on MBTA communities. We're also supposed to have a joint meeting with the selectmen on the twenty-sixth to appoint the alternate member. How does the board feel about potentially switching those meetings?
Because we have to wait for the consultant to show that they know this for us.
Well, I mean, that's, we have to talk about this on Tuesday, I mean, you know, I, I don't know how quickly she get done, stepped up. I think the plan, plan work really wants to hear what Sal has to say before I go to the select board.
So in other words, we're supposed to put the.
Alternate first.
Could the alternate, or?
I think, yeah, like saying.
Yeah, yes.
First.
So, I mean, if we can, if, does everyone have the ability to switch those two Tuesdays?
I mean, sure.
Okay, so. I mean, so maybe when we meet with, when we have our, you know, team meeting for the MBTA communities on Tuesday, I might suggest that. And then try to, so that we can, it's probably gonna take her a week or so to rerun some numbers then, and so that, then we know where we stand. And I still have to read this some more times to try to digest what it, what it really, what it really says.
Yeah, we, you know, we tripped out, I don't know who said that.
We eat on the beach like three weeks for the weekend.
I mean, but it seems like it's very favorable to have.
It is.
Um, but it also adds, it also adds more, just, certainly, certain grants, you're definitely not gonna get it. If you don't comply, they increase that.
That's something.
So, um, you know, I think that when we did the zoning, we were ahead of the game by having transit oriented, oriented, you know, live, little bulk area where you had services and people, and that would keep it vibrant too.
That's what they're beginning to realize, that we can have all of this development around rail. But unless you have something for them to go to, when they get off the train, what's the point?
Exactly.
And, you know, they're running into this in Boston with all of these empty buildings, office buildings, that the little bidets and coffee shop, they're all going out of business. And so they're thinking about turning all those places, if they can, April apartment, Gil City. Things are changing.
So.
That's good news for us.
It is.
Right, I think it's good news for us, and so, um, you know, we'll just, um, hopefully, we'll talk about this in our meeting on Tuesday, and she can get back to us fairly quickly. Um, so I can have stuff to report at the next selectman meeting. About how it would affect us, but I'm gonna try to stay close to the numbers in the zone by law with, based on your input. It seems that the Mother River Navalty District should be reliable because of, well, this is the flood play. Well, you know, try to not get that too high up, you know, the G D C and G W B, you know, you're, you're in your zone A there. But.
Well, I tried to do the math, those were, I just, I, I tried.
So, so I shouldn't that you want us, want us to go, yes, okay. Um, so I don't, you know, and so when we chose not to deliberately, when we did this zoning in two thousand nineteen to expand the area. And our thought was how to meet compliance is changes to the densities and whatever other changes we need to do to make it so that we can comply. Like, we still probably have to take out a special permit for multifamily housing in the G W B district. But, you know, there, there'll be other zoning changes. And I would still think that you need to get that on, spread the town meeting.
Okay, we'll skip ahead.
There you go.
Okay.
We got a few minutes.
We have none.
We have.
No minutes.
No minutes, don't we have, how about money?
I'm hopeful for the requisition of eighty-eight dollars forty cents to Gay House Media for legal ads. Eighteen Drew and Alternative Seat Vacancy for five hundred dollars to Porserly Witten Peer Review Services. For fourteen to sixteen Old Country Way, for four hundred dollars to Porserly Witten for Peer Review Services, eighteen Drew Place. For twenty-seven hundred dollars to Porserly Witten for Peer Review Services, for one thirty-three Flat Road. For one thousand six hundred fifty dollars to Porserly Witten Peer Review Services, for three thirty-four Chief Justice Bushing Highway Law Two. For one thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars ninety cents to Porserly Witten for Peer Review Services for Seaside and Situate. Two hundred eighty dollars to Jesse Consulting for Peer Review Services, for five thirty-three Country Way. For five hundred sixty dollars to Jesse Consulting for Peer Review Services, for thirty-three Driftway slash seven McDonald Terrace. Second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Will we be going, you calling?
All right. Lady of honor. I went to community preservation. There wasn't much going on, we're gonna have a little admin, and he's from the clerk's office, our time. She has two children, a boy and a girl, she needs affordable housing, she needs three bedroom, there are none. And she's really sad. You're very sad. Um, the update, the dinosaur field expansion, we spent forty-two thousand dollars on that, two acres of land below the actual playground on, on Country Way. And they looked at it in terms of putting a field or something on it, and we're not gonna have it, it's too small. Plus, not just too small, the way the area is set up. It, this big steep hill.
It's, it's. You're sliding down it.
Yeah, and that's a big joke, so that's not gonna happen. The Pickle Mall application was drawn, they thought. Um.
So we have an advocate, Pickle Mall, yes.
Well, yeah, but they didn't want to be downtown, all right, that can say no. And then, um, where situat, no, and they wanted money, I think it was five thousand dollars, to look at it. To come up with a place to put it, and I think ultimately it may end up old gates, but it has been withdrawn. And so, that was, that the only other thing that came up. I, her name is Andrea Gillis, that's the new person, yes, on, um, the admin person. Is affordable housing, and as I said to them, I feel that we have spent an inordinate amount of money on recreation, on open space, all those different things, and we have just, we have eleven, one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, or forty thousand. And other than that, both was the green thing, we haven't really done much of whatever. So apparently, there's going to be some discussion in September, somebody's coming on, coming to talk about um, power chat for humanity, et cetera, et cetera. So we're gonna see about. So, and then, um, there's only one article from C P C on the war for this fall, and it has to do with the five thousand, for the tennis courts over here, and that whole tennis court thing at the high school was put on hold because nobody had the appetite to up the energy for the fields, et cetera. So, yes, I went to the selectmen's meeting, and I had to, I seat appointment is in looking for another seven million dollars to see walls. And I just don't understand, when is enough enough? I'm getting, I really don't, because when they're talking about a sea wall that was erected back in nineteen hundred. Well, I'm sure that there were nothing more than little shacks down there at one point, and now, most of these places are bombing and stone shacks. I don't know what the answer is, I really don't, but I will. That's my thirty-five cents.
So I went to conservation agency, so, and then I go clear it, okay, so I guess it all kind of rolls together. Conservation was interested, I'm going through, was on Canada. And right before the meeting, it was continued, so there's something you would have covered much. Um, I, I, I lost it, I'm going through about this by me, this bubble was happening. I had to tell them, I mean, that the map is upside down, that was the first problem, and we worked the map upside down, uh, to recover, we actually look better, but, um, they, they continued that, um, which you very rarely hear in, in, um, conservation, but Frank was not there, I don't know about that one, so he was one of the most affecting, was his, it has to have the covered porch. It, it's, it's maybe a walkway, so it's, people convinced, people, the North Central Beach Program Association, of which I got a loan from, uh, they're concerned that, yeah, technically, with the beach access, there's a big hole to post up, so I said, that is not what they said, so. Uh, again, sometimes I'm only touching your post, always you pay attention. And then, I was at zoning, I'm sharing on the night, and Country Way came first. I don't ever remember in all the years of the wisdom to zoning, that zoning was, they continued to trip to ours, that happened, so this is such a different zoning board, it is like my own day. Um, yeah, I'm happy to say that zoning is looking for game touch, for playing, everybody's come to us.
It would be lovely.
Um, a, a total reversal of what we've heard before, they, they want, um, not our input, but they, they want our ideas of, of zoning issues that come before them. And how does it impact playing in this real confusion, but if you go to zoning first, you go to playing first, what happens? Why, why is that allowed? Um, so, what number is that, seven forty-seven, what number is this? They were advised to go back to the authority table, if we have to participate first, before they go back to zoning. They will buy it on the driveway, they will buy it, etc., they had a lot of issues, so, uh, they're gonna come back, uh, and some way to, maybe they'll be on our agenda soon. As well for that. So you know the little bit of County Committee, you show us, um, Top in the Hill, remember the big red houses in the top, this is my. So you know the moment at County Committee, you show us the top of the hill, remember the big red houses at the top, this is nice, it's a small town. I didn't have big red house at the top of the hill, across the other side of Green Street.
There's a big yellow sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It says lots.
Retreaters.
Retreat lots.
Okay, okay.
Right, way to work.
Closer, then that's closer to North Situate.
Yes. After we.
Yeah, yes, 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 so it's way up there, so, so there's, there's a question about the east driveway and common driveway, why they have to be, it's gonna do with a lot of progress among zoning, so I don't know, so, you gotta go back to the drawing table and Mr. Orin will be with us, I'm sure the next one comes up. Anybody else here is on? So they are putting it development forward?
We remain very busy, they've got a lot under construction, or about being going under construction. We, hopefully the next month we'll be updating our subsidized housing inventory, getting all the paperwork in for that. Yeah, we, I, I think four of the buildings that Drew have seen above, so, that's what, you need to see above when we comply. But we've got several projects to get on subsidized housing inventory.
Is there any indication there that will kind of be tested at your company?
No.
No?
I don't, oh, yeah.
I heard the Italian restaurant, but I'm sure the Mexican restaurant guy was just, you know.
He didn't want to pay.
The only thing that's firm is like a yoga studio.
Is that?
Like a yoga studio. We have a meeting at the end of the first week in September on small cell attachments, so that, you know, I can see for town meeting in the spring, we possibly, you know, M B T A and small cells. I cannot take on accessory dwellings for, for this town meeting, for the fall, for the spring town meeting. Accessory dwellers have to be given some careful, careful thought.
Next Friday.
September, September eighth or something?
Yeah, September eighth.
Yep, so, that's where we are, the next meeting is, is gonna be a busy meeting, you're gonna have the water treatment plant in here for second review, so now you have two accessory dwellings and a whole discussion and then A and R. Oh my goodness, so it's gonna be a busy, who's the A and R?
Is water treatment first.
Water treatment first.
Who's the A and R?
Who's her word? We just got it in today, I haven't stamped it yet. So, it'll be a very busy meeting. So, that's kind of all I have to say, I, I didn't do anything between the last meeting and this meeting.
And you should have, I have a question for you. How do we now go forward, among the five of us, indicate who we would like, should they be assessed at that?
I think we have discussion, we have discussion, you know, discussion first. So, I appreciate everybody, I mean, we did lose two people who had come in.
I mean, should go back to the closing meeting or something?
I think we don't follow, for example, the letter, so we did lose a couple people, one hadn't given time, it's straight out of hand, that was dropped out, but well, of course, it was like, it's just plenty too much work for me. And anybody who is up to the table, but personally to me, I want to tell you, I need a boy that the one is doing something that's, I think, he wants to get out of business, didn't get quite, quite any time, he understands the zoning bylaws, and he understands, I'm not saying he works with G H, whatever, G two, G that. Doesn't that have another data? They have set their box housing. So I mean, that, that would be, especially, I mean, I think anybody can do both, the bottom half basically us right now, and all of the work that we give. Somebody who really understands zoning bylaws and what the fields, that kind of stuff, I think would be a great addition for us, Fort or Water.
I like Ma.
I did too.
I really did, winter, and I liked Ollie, I like Ma. Couldn't we just sort of merge them?
You're gonna get the all, because I mean, but they were all, they could all be for me.
Over at Tish, yeah.
I always thought the first one and the third, or, and, just, he had a lot to offer, the last guy, just, I think, then, I mean, again, both, both your Morris, friend of mine, she doesn't work full time, so she may be, and she's very, she gets her stuff done, she may be able to help you, like, but that third guy, a lot to offer. That's gonna do a lot, I mean, I wonder what you think, Karen?
Yeah, I was, I almost wanna know.
What do you think? Cause it's important.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought they all had qualifications that, you know, that the board could use, I mean, I, I think the third guy had, I mean, sounds like he has some experience in affordable housing and and, and that type of stuff, but, you know, I'm not saying that the other two couldn't get up to speed really quickly. I think that people have to understand on the M B T A communities that we're already pretty far down with this. You know, we have a zoning bylaw, we're trying not to deviate too, too much from this, we're just trying to get our unit capacity. We're not rezoning whole new areas, so, I mean, I think either one, any of them, any of them could be a good choice for the board, I mean.
I like Ma as well.
Like you too.
Really, and I think your point is valid, our zoning, other than waiting another year to do accessory apartments with this M B T A, I think we're, as you pointed out, we're almost set with this, sort of.
No, I mean, we're set with our ideas, it's just getting them on paper.
Right.
To present to town, which I think.
Will be fine, I mean, we're not coming up with now one everything, are we?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, I think the M B T A staff will outlast, they will outlive all of us, and they're probably gonna ratchet it, like, keep actioning.
Yeah.
In a direction, so that's, that's his wheelhouse, right? And this is, you know, yeah, but I also, I also like Ollie, and I also like Ma, cause Ollie for different reasons, like, his strengths are like in different areas that we, that we need in saving more to some.
I did wonder if Ollie would just be good seer. That was, I mean, yeah, so that was my, which is best customer for him, because I just think he's still really working his career.
Yeah, he's still, you know, now.
And, so that.
Not in his role in years.
Well, I like the fact that, what was his first name, Neba or what was his first?
Patrick.
Patrick. That indicated that he was, you know, he had more than a passing interest in planning itself, and that he was considering that as something he might transition into, which is, was a good spot for that. The experience, you know, with the affordable housing in the M B T A, I mean, he's good, also just as a background, as a lawyer, I think this, you know, it's gonna be a good background for this, basically.
The crack in things.
And, you know, I also like the, the fact that these sort of kinds of the, 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 the challenge between, you know, sort of finite land areas and rising water levels, and town needs to really sort of, you know, be planning on those kinds of things. Which I think is consistent with what we said to the master planner as well, so. Yeah, I, I agree with everybody, I like all of them, and it'd be nice if we had, we could, you know, program where we could have them all here, but I think, you know, in terms of where I would lean on the proposition, it's Patrick first. And, you know, I'd probably, none of them would have been your bad choice, so, that's, that's kind of, that was kind of my takeaway there.
I like the fact that Ma grew up here.
Me too.
And that, because sometimes that's important, and you grew up here too.
Well, I didn't grow up here.
No, but it's just.
You know, Patrick's been here for ten years now, which I think is good, you know, Ollie just moved here, it's, it's kind of new, or I guess.
He grew up here.
He grew up. From acid, acid boats.
No, no.
I think he said Situate.
And then I mentioned our ashes, they kicked out.
And Patrick, now, somebody from Palm Acid.
Oh, I'm trying to say, you don't want that.
So, I mean, I could go with either, I could go with Rick or Ma, one of the other, so.
I, I do remember that Ollie could, was kidding, but I knew that we grew up here from Black Street, like children, and, and, and he travels a lot, that type of thing. I think he said that a lot, but he's got a pretty, pretty impressive resume, but I, I think he's still, as you say, he's building his career, which is great. But we need.
We need a lot.
Like, when somebody called and said to me, I didn't realize the tri-con strike that I would have to give to you, I didn't realize it would be that many hours. Because when Ma was setting me in clock, I had to put my children to bed, I was, and stuff, so I didn't, I didn't work that, you know, so.
Well, I think, I mean, I think someone first told me about this, and they said, I don't remember, I thought I was only coming when somebody was.
Oh, no, no, no.
It was not, like, wouldn't make any sense.
But you don't know until. What do you think, Ma?
Like, with Patrick, I'm like, this is getting more appeals, although I have no control over him, and I'd like to, actually, for like some of the longer term projects, like project management kind of stuff, I think Ollie actually fits the bill on that. Like, I'm, I don't, I'm still, yeah.
Can you just decide this?
We're gonna decide pretty soon, right?
We have to decide before the next meeting.
And it has to be a public decision.
Yeah, I don't see that this, well, we've done it always before an open session, I don't make this qualifier executives.
No, I don't, no, I don't like that.
So, I mean, you know, you have to make a decision, we, I have to write, you know, then we have to get on the selectment to have a joint meeting.
Which is the twelfth.
Which I'm gonna try to get to the twelfth, and instead of switch the two meetings, and it has, it's a roll call vote.
So, I guess, everybody wanna lose the roll call voting?
No, I mean.
No, that's the select board, select board.
Right, so I mean, everybody needs to be present, you want to, you want to have all your votes.
Yeah.
So you get the person, I mean, we're gonna go in with a recommendation, and hopefully they don't disagree with your, with your recommendation. They're not gonna, we're not gonna bring, we're not gonna have doubtful people there.
No, no, and they're not gonna interview them, so.
No, right, but, no. So I, I said that for my own horse, for the deal, I think that another lawyer with his background would greatly improve, while I do with Ollie. If he did maybe another couple of years, it's a little more settled, I think that what he has about affordability, just something we're struggling with right now, he, he sees the unrest of that in, in Medellin toward planning, so I would take a vote, and that would be my first, that would be my first choice. So we can agree to disagree, tally it up, and we're waiting, right?
Yeah, I'd probably agree with that.
You know what, I'll say it right this time.
Sure.
You know what, I would agree with you too, I mean, we really, we do need a lawyer like that. We have, no, but he's a real student. What?
Can I make lawyer jokes now?
You're supposed to make idiotic jokes.
Oh, yeah.
The only kind of weird joke I know is Ronald speaking as a veteran, yeah, that's all I keep up, but I'll introduce you to your father. That's, that's the only, that's, that's the only engineer show, but I don't have a word down from an engineer.
Do we need to make a motion on this?
Well, I think that we need to get what other people want, the three of us seem to agree, definitely with, like, or.
Yeah, I'll go with, with Ollie, I think that, or I'm sorry, with Patrick, but I think that, like, recommending to Ollie, like, um, like, stay close, like, you know, don't move out of the premises, and same thing with, with Ma.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would really agree with that.
Yeah, I'll agree with that, so, okay, if you put a letter to Mr. Joe, if you tell him you love him.
I mean, you think about that decision?
I'm fine with that, I mean, we don't wanna say the other, we don't wanna say.
You're not falling for it, absolutely.
We don't wanna send any letters out yet, until after, after the appointment, after the appointment is ready, then we send out a letter.
And like, actually, whoever isn't chosen needs a letter as well, sending them for.
They, right, so we send out letters.
Right, and recommending that they do A D and C.
I guess, I mean, all knows that there's enough around town, that does not require the amount of town getting here. You know, your cultural resources, what they, but it's all this.
G D C, yeah.
Yeah, and we, we have, you know, all kinds of groups up, up there, that you possibly imagine. So, all right, we made our decision.
All right, so I'll see if I can't switch the two meetings.
Okay.
I mean, if, I'm thinking that, I just wanna give the consultants enough time, so that I can give you an update again on the fourteenth, what the numbers really say, and then before we go, does what?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
I'm gonna go shoot which are, just a second.
Sorry.
Oh, bigger.
All right.
Bye.